We'll call the City Council regular meeting to order for Monday, October 20th, 2025. Would everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undervalued, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Lean.
Here.
Councilmember Cordis.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Mayor Hoyt.
Here.
All right, any changes to the agenda?
Nope.
Amy, Nick? Anybody? All right, seeing no changes, I would seek a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Nick, second by Jake. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, moving on, our next item would be citizen comments. If anyone in attendance wishing to speak, please come up and do so at this time. A reminder that citizen comments are a time for anyone to address the City Council on matters not on the agenda. Those speaking should state their name and address and limit their comments to five minutes. The City Council will not engage in discussion on your topic, but those issues requiring a response will be responded to by the next City Council meeting. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Nicole Coulson, 19235 Everest Path, and I appreciate this opportunity to speak in support of the school district's operating levy and the outcome of a vote November 4th that impacts all of us. My family moved to Farmington from Apple Valley 19 years ago, just in time for our oldest daughter to start kindergarten at Meadowview. We plan to live here and volunteer in the schools until our youngest graduated from FHS in 2023. My husband could see us putting a for sale sign immediately, on the spot, and moving to a farmhouse with land and space for a shop. I wanted less space and a smaller place. Either way, we weren't going to stay put in Farmington. After David passed away suddenly four years ago tomorrow, this community, our friends and neighbors, showed us a different path forward. We stay now because this feels more like home than ever. So much of our health and well-being is rooted in community, however you define it. I'm voting yes for the schools because of the opportunities they offer students, families, and fans of our teams, our programs, and activities. They are the heartbeat of this city and a key draw for folks moving in and putting down roots, even or maybe especially as bold and sometimes difficult new chapters are being written here. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sarah Rice. I live at 409 Ninth Street in Farmington, and I'm here tonight to also speak in support of this upcoming school levy referendum. Not more than five years ago, you could not have convinced me that I would be here speaking in support of funding public schools. Although I myself had a fairly non-eventful experience with public school growing up here in Farmington and attending public schools through the middle of eighth grade, I found myself at a place in 2020 where I could not imagine public school meeting the needs of my children, particularly my oldest daughter who was diagnosed with autism at age four. I had tried homeschooling my daughter, but by the time she was in second grade, we made the decision to enroll her in a private school just for students with autism and learning-related differences. It almost seemed like a magical place. We had looked into traditional religious private schools, but none of them would have taken her. She was too far behind academically, and they could not provide the type of disability-related support that she would need. At this special school, there were six students in her class and a behavioral therapist, as well as her classroom teacher. It also came with a price tag of roughly three times the amount of tuition at traditional private schools. This was a life-altering level of financial commitment, but as you might know, if you've ever spent five minutes talking to a mom of a child with disabilities, there's just about nothing I wouldn't have done. However, as you might imagine, there are pros but also serious cons to attending a school that only contains students with learning disabilities. Socially, it didn't always seem like she was gaining skills that would transfer to other settings, and financially, we were already starting to drown when COVID hit. She couldn't attend school, which we understood, but I couldn't go to work if she couldn't go to school and tuition still needed to be paid. After three years and having our fourth-grade daughter still reading at a second-grade level and doing math around a first-grade level, we made the difficult decision to pull her out. And during her fifth-grade year, we moved home here to Farmington where we grew up. And like the rest of the world, I homeschooled during the pandemic. Since I had been homeschooled and been around homeschooling a lot growing up and in the churches we attended, it felt natural. The plan had been to continue with homeschooling even once the pandemic ended, but I could tell something needed to change. She was making up some of the ground she needed to academically, but she wasn't thriving overall. She needed more opportunities for connection and community. We looked at homeschool co-ops, but none of them had the infrastructure to really support her. We settled on a charter school in a town just south of here during the summer before her sixth-grade year. I was so nervous about even a type of public school, but I got her enrolled. There had been messaging both from a cultural standpoint and honestly just as part of a special-needs parent community that painted a picture that there was just no way public school could be a good option for her. In August of 2021, literally weeks before she was supposed to start sixth grade at the charter school, I saw a post in one of our Facebook community pages. It was a band parent proudly sharing about an event the high school marching band had taken part in. Band. I hadn't thought of that. Part of her struggle with finding a community to plug into was that she wasn't a sports kid. I remembered the band program from when I was growing up. That was a type of program with built-in infrastructure of commitment and teamwork that might be exactly what she needed, but it wasn't available at the charter school or most charter schools. So I called an audible, and I enrolled her at Bachman terrified, not knowing what was going to happen, but being here in my hometown, I just felt like I would be able to keep an eye on it and see how things were going. The last five years have blown me away, as at every turn, teachers have supported her, cheered for her, and worked to help her thrive. She came in sixth grade, years behind in reading and math. She's in advanced math now. She reads advanced texts for fun, and she's taking a course offer through DCTC and Inver Hills at the high school this year as a sophomore. That progress happened here in District 192. She has all As and Bs right now, but even last year, when she struggled a bit through geometry, I had no doubt she had the tools and team around her to figure it out, and she did. And boy, does she love band, and that band loves her right back. And I can't begin to tell you what a gift that is to a parent who has watched their child navigate incredible isolation due to disability. While I credit our community page with reminding me of the benefits of a band program in school, and for that, I will always be grateful. Lately, if you spend much time on there, there are some loud commenters who may make it seem like the school levy is a division of the usual teams. I am so thankful that that couldn't be further from the truth. I took the leap and attended my first meeting of volunteers to try and help spread the word about this vote a couple of months ago, and what I discovered was what an incredible experience it is to work alongside a group of neighbors that have hugely diverse opinions about just about everything. But they understand what I have come to know is true as well. There's a lot going on that we can't change in our state, in our country, and in our world. Doesn't mean we stop trying, but we acknowledge our limitations, but where we can always have the most impact is here at home. And we don't have to withhold what our community needs as some sort of loyalty pledge to a team. We don't have to let fear and chaos drown out all the good things that are happening when we take the time to talk to our neighbors and hear about them. I know our story isn't everyone's, but it's probably a lot more common than people might think. School District 192 is where my daughter came alive, where she was and is surrounded with support and care, and where our family is thriving. I'm hopeful the community will see how desperately these funds are needed to keep basic programming in place, because it matters a lot to kids like mine and to parents like me who are so thankful to have found the support and care our kids need to thrive right here at home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tomorrow is my birthday. Here I am again, wishing that Farmington City Council, Tract, the Minnesota DNR, the Met Council, the State of Minnesota, hell, maybe even big tech companies will realize that locating a hyper data center 250 feet from my house is wrong. Locating an electrical substation 40 feet from the property line is wrong. Potentially fouling my well water is wrong. Creating daylight 24/7 is wrong. And allowing a constant mind-numbing hum from the cooling towers is wrong. None of these things should be allowed because of the zoning change. If I blow out my candle, will my wishes come true?
I'm Nancy Arstid, Beaumont Avenue. Braveheart, I'm sure you've all seen it, great movie. Mel was in his prime. Why was it a blockbuster? It was about a great leader. It was the true story of William Wallace, a Scottish knight who was fighting the English. He didn't tell his men to go fight, he fought beside them. He was ready to die. He didn't ask his men to do something he wasn't willing to do. We honor leaders like that. George Washington, same thing. Our first president physically fought in a war. He didn't ask his men to endure something he wasn't willing to also endure. He is honored, a true leader. And then there are those movies we've all watched where the generals sit on their horses on a distant, safe hill, and they send their men down and watch as their troops get slaughtered. And then they turn and go home without a scratch, and we look down on those leaders. They look weak. There is no honor in that. I'm trying to make you see why the public outcry continues to grow. You are those leaders on the hill. You sat on your hill with Tract at one side, your staff pushing you on the other, and you voted in this misery for us while you live on the other side of town. You get to go home to your quiet neighborhoods, and you leave us to deal with the fallout for years to come. This is not honorable. If this data center were surrounded by open fields, this would be a different fight, but it's not. This data center is surrounded by our homes. It's surrounded by established homes, 250-foot setbacks. It's surrounded by children, babies, grandparents, hard-working families, people who work nights and have to try to sleep through the industrial construction noise during the day, people with health issues, people who thought they bought their dream home. This is wrong, and everyone can see it. There is only one leader up there. He stood bravely alone. He took one look at this map, and he said, "I wouldn't want it for me, therefore, I'm not going to do it to them." One leader out of five. Jake, I know you didn't vote on November 4th, but you publicly supported this project. If your view has changed, you can say so. Otherwise, I have to lump you in with the rest. Remember COVID, when we couldn't go to a bar with our friends, couldn't go to sport events, no school, no entertaining, nothing? How did you feel when lawmakers who forced those rules on us were caught hosting parties and fundraising with hundreds of people with no masks, getting their hair done when we couldn't get our hair done? We looked down on them. Rules for thee, not for me. There was a suggestion online to set up construction lights around your homes just to give you a tiny taste of what we'll live with, and you didn't like that idea. Again, rules for thee, not for me. You seem surprised as the public continues to push back. Holly mentioned it a few meetings ago. I'm expecting that publicly criticizing your actions and speaking the truth will continue. Mayor, on April 7th, you talked about the public pushback as well, and you said it's sickening. It's sickening to watch. Anyone can find that on the April 7th meeting video. It is right before you guaranteed that the city would win the lawsuit. Josh, people fighting for their homes, their families, and their quality of life is not sickening. What's sickening is voting this in for people you serve while you live on the other side of town. What's sickening is watching you continue to double down, ignore the residents, and refuse to protect them. The truth is, you thought you could sell us out to Tract and that we'd lie down and take it. We aren't going to lie down and take it. We may not look like William Wallace is out here. Look at... But we have the same spirit, and we'll keep fighting even against the odds for our homes and our families. Despite what your attorney may say, you and Tract could still change this course if you wanted to. You know you could, and will you? No. It would take way more courage for you to decide to protect us rather than fight against us, and sadly, I don't see it. But I'll keep praying for your hearts to soften, your ears to open, your eyes to see, and for you to find the courage to be the leaders your residents are begging you to be. And yes, the pushback will continue, and no matter how this ends, there will be no statues for you or your staff, because this is not honorable. Thank you.
Mayor, Council, Jeff Schotler, 22420 Calico Court. I'll try to be quick. Last time, I appreciate you letting me go on over the five minutes and not cutting me off. This all comes down to the original decision of the zoning issue. This project does not follow or support your guiding principles, connectivity, and it certainly isn't compatible with residential. Municipal code states that it describes the purpose of the industrial district as providing areas for industrial activities while protecting adjacent properties from negative impact. The protection that's been afforded wasn't by you guys, wasn't your ideas. It's what Tract came. They even said it. They tried to put their best foot forward. I haven't seen one move out of this city staff or this council or you mayor to respond to things we've asked for. Not one thing. Not one. What Tract offered, that's what we get as people. It's not what you thought of. It's not what the master's degrees that sit over there sometimes thought of. It's what Tract thought of. We're asking for things to change. You're going to be at a point where there's winners and losers only, and there's no middle ground. We've talked about, I've offered, other people have offered. There's designs out there and plans out there of this technology, park affording the same exact square footage, the same revenue to the city, the same profit to Tract, but gives us some of the things we're looking for. Do you guys want to entertain that? It's crazy to me. You could do things to stop these lawsuits now, but you're not even attempting. Data center fits both MUCI and industrial zoning. How is it fits both but has no distinction or description of them? If it fits MUCI and industrial, why isn't there description? You know, which one fits in which one, or it just fits in both? And where in city code is a hyperscale technology park? They're a little bit different. A data center is a building. It's one complex. It's not 12 different ones, you know, 10 different ones, whatever they're doing. The general purpose for industrial zoning is as follows. Industrial zoning separates industrial activities from other areas like residential neighborhoods to minimize issues like noise, traffic, and pollution. The regulations often consider infrastructure needs, environmental impacts, and compatibility with surrounding area. What's the distinction then that this isn't heavy industrial? Every place else is moving straight to industrial. Tract is dealing with Cannon Falls right now. They went straight to their heaviest industrial to put that in. It's the same exact size, footprint, design, everything. They're given the same specs, this many megawatts, this many square feet, this many jobs, this much money. It's the same thing. So what makes Farmington different than these other cities that decide these need to be an industrial versus we're putting them in MUCI? It's obvious to all of us, the difference is Met Council would not have allowed those properties to be zoned into industrial. They're not going to let you put industrial there, but they'll let you put an industrial entity into there because it fits your outdated and insufficient ordinance. We know the difference from a house and an apartment building, heavy automotive, light automotive. Where's the difference in data centers, the size and the scale, and where they actually belong? It's obvious. It's a pure industrial project. There's three of you up there that's... Not tonight. There's two of you tonight that said you wouldn't like it. Holly also admitted out loud she wouldn't like it. Steve even voted against it. Your most seasoned and experienced council member said it would scare the heck out of him if he saw that at 250 feet. Don't listen to me then. Listen to the guy that coached all of you and gave you some tips and pointers as you came in as your most seasoned person. Listen to him. See what he would have wanted to see different. Work with him if you don't want to work with us, because he's listening to us. He's talked to us about it. There's time for things to change. It doesn't have to be a win or a loss. It can still be made to work out for people, for residents, and for the city, and for the Olsons, and for the school. At some point, you're forced into a corner where you win or lose, you know? Once this next judgment comes out and cases get to combine, it's a simple win or loss then. There is no negotiating anymore then. I don't see why you wouldn't take a second and think about it and talk to people and at least produce a false report to people. Hey, guess what? We reached out to Tract, and they said not going to work. You won't even give us a fake report that you tried. You know, we're here asking you over and over for something to happen, a solid effort on our part. We're up here trying. We didn't complain once. We haven't complained for a day. It isn't like this is fun for any of us. We all have lives and things to do, so we're hoping at some point, some of this can be heard. We are your people and your residents. Whether it comes or not, we're still going to be here, you know? You're going to have to listen to us and deal with us forever. It's going to push some of us to try to get up there and sit next to you guys to help make decisions like this. Why go that far? Thank you.
Hey, good evening, Mayor and Council and city staff. My name's Nate Ryan. I live on Cambrian Way, just on the other side of Farmington. So last time I was up here, last time I spoke, I talked about a moratorium, and the city attorney had given you what I seem to be legal advice and said, you know, basically that a moratorium is not applicable in this situation. So I don't normally like to disagree with attorneys, because I think highly of them and I respect them a lot. But in this case, I only disagree because I just don't know that from the time that I spoke until the end of the meeting was 18 minutes. And I'm concerned that when somebody takes 18 minutes to research something or, you know, has experience with that and maybe doesn't look at the totality of the situation, that legal advice that came across at the end of the meeting, which Josh replied to, "Thank you for the factual, you know, thank you for the factual information," I'm just concerned. I'm concerned that because where I look where you're getting your advice from, their interest and everyone's interest is not mine. It's not for the city. It's not for the residents. They're kind of telling you what you want to hear. And I'd like to bring up moratoriums just one more time, because I definitely think that this is something that could help. And my goal of this is to not have you ever be in any more lawsuits or to bring Tract back to the table, to let's get those setbacks to 400 feet. Let's still have them build buildings. I've never come up here one time and said, "No data centers." I'm not anti-data center. I am for myself and for my neighbors in very much favor of getting larger setbacks. And I think that with larger setbacks, Tract can still make billions of dollars. They can still do their project. We can, you know, maybe not net any revenue. I think that we've already spent it, but that's for a different conversation. But I want to go back to moratoriums and specifically around that Minnesota law does. Minnesota statute 462.355 allows citizens and townships to enact interim ordinances or a moratorium that temporarily freezes certain types of developments for up to one year while they conduct a study or update their comprehensive plans or zoning ordinances. And I definitely think that there is an opportunity here specifically around having a moratorium that because the part of that is the city council must provide written findings demonstrating that existing plans or ordinances are insufficient to prevent serious public harm from the development in the area. And I definitely think that there is serious public harm that can come with these data centers. And one of them, the biggest one, is fire. And I think that we're seeing that with the wanting to grow the fire department. They have to have specialized, very specialized equipment to put out a fire. Not only that, the components, when they're burned, if they were to catch on fire, are extremely toxic, not just to kids, but to everyone, but specifically children. I do think that there's water pressure issues that would arise. If you're in the construction phase and you haven't built a water tower and there's a fire over there, and you don't have, and there happens to be another fire across town, you're potentially not going to have the water and the fire, the water pressure needed, excuse me, the fire, the water suppression slash pressure needed to fight fires potentially two or three across the city. And I think that is a very big, serious public harm. The other thing is with the noise, glare, and dust of construction and the fact that I don't think that we've got our zoning completely right. I've said this from the very beginning. And Kathy can say for sure, when I first heard about this project from her, my very first response is, "This is about zoning. This is not about a data center. This is purely about zoning." And this is an industrial project. And I definitely think that we need to get that zoning right, because if we don't, then we have other commercial mixed-use properties that get zoned, and now we have other potential heavier industrial go on in that area. Specifically around mixed-use commercial industrial, that word mixed-use, there's no mixed-use here, guys. There's just simply not. This is a pure industrial site. And I don't know a lot of understanding about the differences between a regular data center and a hyperscale data center. And hyperscale data centers are almost always, except for Farmington, are in industrial, pure industrial areas. One of the biggest reasons why is consumption of power. So 750 megawatts is not a little bit of power. And again, going back to just the pure fire aspect of it, to fight a fire that has all different types of components plus that much electricity, which is Phase 3, which means it's constantly on. There's no like, I mean, you could turn it off from the station, but it's constantly on. Like, that's a thing with these hyperscale data centers. They start at 10,000 square feet. A regular traditional data center is 10,000 square feet or less. Scalability, these things are meant to have multiple users, multiple owners that go on here. Whereas like a regular traditional data center, like the 5-megawatt one that's up in Eagan, that one is just one company, one user, one thing. These things are not built for just one user. These things are built because they're for industrial reasons, and they scale that way as well. The most significant difference between a regular data center and a hyperscale is architecture and software optimization. So they really allow these to scale dynamically and massively, and those are there. That is one of the main reasons that they use the term hyperscale. And I would like to point out again that we don't have a definition in the city of Farmington for hyperscale data center. We're going off of an old-school definition of just data center. Back before, they were over 10,000 square feet. And I really, really, I don't want to see you guys sued. I don't want to see us sued. I don't want my tax dollars sued. It's annoying at a bare minimum. There must be a difference, and that protects the public. That is a reason to bring forth a moratorium. That is a reason. It's something that you can bring and say, "We're protecting the public." And it's not saying that we're never going to have a data center inside of Farmington ever again and simply saying, "Let's stop. Let's look at this and make sure that this is the right spot with the right setbacks to protect the public." And there have been cases where cities have used moratorium. Lionel Lakes comes up, right? So, and that was a housing moratorium. Me in Minnesota right now, we have moratoriums against building nuclear power plants. We have moratoriums against building hospitals. Moratoriums are a thing. And it starts here. Tomorrow morning, the Dakota County Commissioners meet at 9 o'clock. I'll be there next. But I start here. I start with the people who I know. Along with that, and I know that I'm going long, and I apologize for that, but along with that, I just, I really would like to just have you just understand a few other things. In the PUD, that I would assume that Tony wrote with the help of Tract, the minimum transmission line starts at 69 KV. Okay, so I'd like you to think of it this way. KV is a flow volume, and it's moving at very high pressure. KV is a, is a flow volume, so, and it's moving at very high pressure. So like, right, like, like a air hose has a lot of KV if it's under like a lot of, a lot of pressure, right? Like, let's say a hundred PSI, pounds per square inch of pressure. And KV, the higher that number goes, the more pressure that's on that line. In your PUD, that you, that you wanted to, you didn't sign up for a KV that is mixed-use commercial industrial. Your minimum is sixty-nine KV, that's what's written in your PUD. Sixty-nine KV, look it up. That's the minimum. It's not the maximum, it's the minimum. That is the low-grade, low-industrial starting point. It's not the mixed-use commercial industrial starting point. That is the industrial starting point. And it just goes up from there. And in order to put in a data center of this scale, you need a little bit more. You're probably closer to a hundred KV. Which for sure puts this project inside of that industrial range, industrial space. Which then, going back to my original point, could really harm the public. And that's why I definitely think that we need a moratorium. Not to mention, so when you did your comprehensive planned rewrite or your, whatever you called it, Josh, I don't remember, but you did that rewrite, started in twenty-two, there were some staff changes, it didn't, you know, didn't go anywhere. And then, once you rewrote those things, they, inside of there, some of the major thing it talks about is protecting wetlands and protecting environmental resources. It also says that your goal across the city is to reduce your carbon footprint, your, whatever they call the gases that cows fart make, I can't remember what it's called, but the not, the, the CO2 footprint. So that, that you want to reduce it by fifteen percent. So how does this project reduce your carbon footprint by fifteen percent? How does it reduce it in the construction phase? How does it reduce it when you move forward? How does it reduce it when you pour warm, accidentally pour warm water into that river and you kill all the fish that are there? That is an immediate need, an immediate need for a moratorium to protect our natural resources. And that's what you all loved. When you go back and read your comments, like, yeah, those things are great, we love our natural resources. That's what we want, yay. You're saying one thing and you're doing the complete opposite. You're not protecting the river that flows south there, you're not protecting the residents. But you have an opportunity. And that opportunity is a moratorium. Again, it doesn't mean that we never have a data center here in, in Farmington. It just simply means, gosh darn it, let's just make sure this is the right spot. Let's make sure that this is the right setbacks. And it brings them back to the table, they have to negotiate with you. You enact a moratorium, rather than the citizens suing you, now you've got, you've got Tract suing you. By the way, I'll pay for that in my taxes, right? I'm gonna pay for a lawsuit either way, but I would much rather pay, and I can guarantee many other people would much rather pay for a lawsuit where you're protecting our interest. Rather than giving us double middle fingers. Thank you for listening. I hope that we're getting the message across. Moratorium would work. It will bring Tract back to the table. Are you gonna get sued from Tract? Yep, you're going to. I can almost guarantee it. Just like Lionel Lakes got sued by the faith-based organization that wanted to bring in faith-based housing over there. However, that moratorium only lasted a year. And now they're building. Lawsuit's still going on. But at least this city of Lionel Lakes said, hey, we're, we're doing what's right for our residents. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to item seven, which is our consent agenda. I would seek a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Jake. Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Excuse me. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for the certification of delinquent municipal services to the 2026 property taxes. I'd like to go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Kim?
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. Tonight, we are holding a public, public hearing related to the city's annual process for certifying delinquent charges to property taxes. Each year, the city incurs costs when services are provided but not paid for. Most often, things like water and sewer utilities, mowing or, or snow removal done on neglected properties and code enforcement work required to maintain community standards. Rather than send these unpaid bills to a collection agency, which can be costly and inefficient, we use a process laid out in state law that allows us to recover those amounts through the property tax system. Property owners were notified of their outstanding balances at the end of August and given clear instructions on how to avoid certification, specifically by paying their full balance by October sixteenth. That deadline has now passed. Following the cutoff date, there are four hundred and forty-six delinquent accounts with a total outstanding balance of two hundred and fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and forty-six dollars and seventy cents, which is now being requested for certification. The goal of this process is about cost recovery. These are services the city has already provided. Certifying them to the tax rule ensures we can recoup those costs fairly and consistently without shifting the burden to the broader taxpayer base. Once the public has had an opportunity to comment, staff is recommending that the council close the public hearing and adopt the resolution to certify the unpaid balances to the 2026 property tax rolls.
Thank you, ma'am. Nick, any questions?
No questions.
Jake?
None at this time.
Steve?
None.
I have no questions for you. This is a public hearing, so if there's anyone wishing to speak, come up at this time. All right. Seeing none, then I will close the public hearing. Any additional deliberation or comments, Nick? Jake or Steve?
None.
Okay. And seek a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five tag zero seven one, certifying delinquent municipal service accounts to Dakota County Treasurer Auditor for Collection with the 2026 property taxes.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Steve, second by Nick. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Cordis?
Yes.
Councilmember Relene?
Yes.
Mayor Hoyt?
Yes.
Thank you, Kim. Our next item under new business is twelve-one, which is the agreement with Spawn Ranch, Inc. for design and construction services for the skate park. Kelly?
Good evening, Mayor and today Councilmembers. I'm excited to be here this evening to mark the next step in the development of a new skate park here in Farmington. The development of a new skate park in Farmington has been a long time in the making and reflects years of community interest and need. Some may remember nearly twenty years ago, the city had non-permanent skate park ramps set up in the rinks, outdoor rinks behind Dodge Middle School. These ramps were extremely popular and well-used until they were eventually removed by the city due to safety concerns. In March of twenty twenty-one, skateboarders presented to the Parks and Recreation Commission about their idea on a permanent skate park being constructed in Farmington. Since then, the commission has made the skate park a priority, recognizing a significant gap in recreational opportunities for pre-teens and teenagers within our park system. There was much community interest in adding a permanent skate park that it was included in the master plan for Rambling River Park, which was adopted in August of twenty twenty-three. The city of Farmington applied and was awarded a fiscal year twenty-six outdoor recreation grant in the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand, hundred and fifty thousand dollars to support the development of this new skate park. This grant is administered by the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources and is federally funded through the Land and Water Conservation Fund. The outdoor recreation grant program requires a one-to-one match. The maximum grant award is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a total project cost of at least seven hundred thousand dollars. At the February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five city council meeting, city council approved matching funds up to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to come from the Liquor Operation Community Project Funds. The new skate park will be constructed at Feely Fields in Rambling River Park. The existing small baseball field, known as Lost Ballpark, will be demolished to make way for the new skate park. Staff explored multiple options for the design and construction of the new skate park. After careful consideration and consultation with various stakeholders, staff determined utilizing the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program for the design-build of the skate park was the most efficient, effective and advantageous approach. Sourcewell is a state of Minnesota local government agency that offers competitively solicited cooperative purchasing contracts to streamline purchasing for public agencies. Staff evaluated qualified vendors through the Sourcewell Program, which includes four nationally awarded contracts for skate parks and related services. Two firms, California Skate Parks and Spawn Ranch, came highly recommended by metro area parks and recreation professionals for their experience and quality of work. To determine the best fit for our project, staff conducted a thorough evaluation process, including contacted both firms and obtained their statement of qualifications for professional design-build services, held virtual meetings with each company to discuss their approach, experience and understanding of our project, requested and received formal design build proposals for our project from both firms, and met virtually with municipal colleagues who are or have recently worked with either firm on similar projects, including design, construction or a full design-build services. Spawn Ranch invited staff to a site visit of the Apple Valley Skate Park during the construction phase after the sum of the concrete had been poured. Four members of the Parks and Recreation Team visited the site and met directly with Spawn Ranch's onsite construction team to observe their work and have a valuable discussion with them. Based on their qualifications, relevant experience, responsiveness and observed construction quality, staff recommends entering into an agreement with Spawn Ranch for design and construction services for the new skate park project. Spawn Ranch operates under the motto, "All Wheels", reflecting their commitment to designing and building skate parks for anything on wheels without a motor. So that would include skate parks, our skateboards, bikes, scooters and rollerblades. Just no E-anything or motors. Staff also identified several key reasons for selecting Spawn Ranch as the preferred design-build partner. Public engagement, number one. Spawn Ranch will facilitate three public input meetings to gather community feedback. The first two meetings will be held in person, with the third conducted virtually. Site enhancements. Spawn Ranch will oversee the design and construction or installation of all non-sport, non-skate park features, which may include sidewalks, trails, concrete pads for shade structures, benches and trash, recycling containers and landscaping. A collaborative design team. Spawn Ranch is partnering with Action Park Alliance, APA, who is a professional skate park management and leaders in adaptive wheeled sports and design process. We are excited that APA will be part of the design process as they are champions of adaptive wheeled sports. This will ensure accessibility features are informed by best practices and direct user experience. In one of my recent phone calls with Jason from Spawn Ranch, he shared he had just gotten off a phone call with Victor at APA. Victor was excited to share that the city of Chicago had reached out to APA to build an accessible skate park in twenty twenty-six. Thus, we are thrilled to have APA involved with our project. Spawn Ranch informed me, we are at the tip of the spear as few communities are prioritizing accessible features in the skate park like we are. Many say, a lot of communities just say, we don't even care if it's accessible, accessible to get to. So we are far ahead of the curve, as far as accessibility goes. The skate park will be funded through three sources. Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the outdoor recreation grant, the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the Liquor Operations Community Project Funds, and three hundred thousand from the Park Improvement Fund, bringing the total amount available for the project to one million dollars. As a reminder, the Park Improvement Fund includes cash in lieu of land paid by developers to satisfy the parks, that the city's park dedication requirement in instances where land for a park was not dedicated. Recent examples of this include Vita Tiva, The Rye, Dakota Metals Preserve and Denmark Housing Edition. It's important to remember, park dedication fees, cash in lieu, can't be used for ongoing maintenance or replacement of existing amenities such as playgrounds, trails or park features. This restriction is set by state statute. Thus, the skate park project represents an appropriate and impactful use of these funds. The agreement with Spawn Ranch stipulates the project must be completed for a amount not to exceed one million dollars. Spawn Ranch has estimated design costs at approximately twenty-five thousand with the remainder of the amount allocated to construction activities and materials, shade structures, benches, picnic tables, bike fix-it stations, et cetera. While the grant agreement with the DNR is expected to be executed in November or December of twenty twenty-five, several pre-construction tasks must be, begin before then. A budget amendment is needed to authorize early phase work in twenty twenty-five, including a phase one literature review and archaeological assessment as required by the Minnesota State Historic Preservation Office, a site survey, geotechnical investigation and design by Spawn Ranch. These activities will all be funded out of the Park Improvement Fund. I want to take this opportunity to thank Kerry Kubachek, HKGI and Josh Schollinger and his team. Without their vision, hard work and dedication, this project wouldn't be a reality. The action requested tonight is to approve the agreement with Spawn Ranch for design and construction services for the skate park and amend the budget accordingly. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Steve, any questions?
No questions, Kelly. I know this has been a really long time to get to this point. You mentioned something that I do want the community to be aware of, that the reason we're here today really is, three to four years ago, you had, you know, a teenage group, which quite frankly, there are so limited amounts of activities for kind of that, you know, the nine, ten, probably up to fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. And, you know, having that group of organized kids, you know, in the community coming to you with an idea, presenting a proposal, having the Park and Rec Commission work through it, collaboration with us, collaboration with the team. Just really appreciate all the great work and the fact that we're here today, kind of really getting this going.
Jake?
Kelly, thank you for your dedication to this project. Over the last few years, I know several community members that I've talked to about this new skate park are very excited to see it coming. It bears repeating that no tax dollars are being spent on this. It's coming from grant funding, park improvement funds and the Liquor Operations Community Project Funds. You touched on the Park Improvement Fund already. But typically in Farmington, the Liquor Operations Community Fund goes towards projects like this, new things. We don't, well, there is a little bit of flexibility. We traditionally have been using that for amenities such as this, is that correct?
Correct. And I think the last community project was work at the ice right now.
Thanks, Kelly.
Nick?
Well, Jake wrote his down, so it's more thorough than mine. I was just gonna say, like, I really appreciate the work that Kerry does. Obviously, it comes through in big in situations like this and all the other examples that we've had recently. To Steve's point, the missing area in our park system, this is one of those huge things that just goes a long way towards that. So I really appreciate us trying to focus in on this and I thank the Parks and Rec Commission for doing that too. You know, they're a big part of driving for a lot of these things, so I'm excited.
Yeah, not to be redundant on what my peers have said, but, you know, looking back to twenty nineteen and even when we started the initial community survey about Jimbell Park and that kind of started the larger master plan conversation with the Park and Rec Board, city council, EDA, and just talking about where the priorities are, where we see naturally occurring development and how we can best fill those gaps within our system. Going into the Rambling River Park Master Plan and seeing the concepts, narrowly missing the grant last year. You know, if anything, it's, it's almost bittersweet because we, we get it a year later, but it also allows us to, or allows the community to contribute more into like the liquor stores, which again, our dollars put right back into our community, right? So just, it's a, it's a culmination of many things working in our favor and it's, it's great to see it finally getting to this point and, and moving forward. So, thank you. With that, I would seek a motion to approve the attached agreement with Spawn Ranch, Inc. for design and construction services for the skate park and amend the budget accordingly.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Jake, second by Steve. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Relene?
Yes.
Councilmember Cordis?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Hoyt?
Yes.
Thank you, Kelly. Roundtable.
Roundtable. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. As has become the habit, I'll kind of respond to some of the comments that were made during the public comment session, just to, you know, have the information out there for the public to have. the public to have. One of the speakers talked about the MUCI zoning and in Cannon Falls, they're going, you know, this type of data center development is going straight to an industrial zone. Obviously, Cannon Falls is different than Farmington, and their zoning code is different than Farmington, and the land that's available in Cannon Falls is different than what's available in Farmington. And so, even if that is what they're doing in Cannon Falls, which I don't know one way or the other, I have no reason to doubt that Mr. Schotler is correct about that. It's not an apt comparison because it's, this is Farmington, and the Farmington city code is what applies. And that sort of relates to one of the things that Mr. Ryan mentioned about the mixed-use commercial-industrial, the MUCI zoning. That zoning district, as we've talked about before, is intended to provide flexibility. It doesn't, the fact that it says that it's mixed-use commercial-industrial doesn't mean that every project has to be a mixed-use that goes into that zoning district. It doesn't, it provides that you can have a mixed-use, you can have a commercial, you can have an industrial project. It gives that flexibility within the code for different use, different development to go in there, into anything in that zoning district. And more than, you know, if you look at the zoning map for the city, I mean, a much larger part of the city is zoned for, under the MUCI. It's not just this parcel. And, you know, I don't hesitate to, you know, comment about things that I have said in the past because this isn't about me, you know, and the fact that Mr. Ryan said that I gave advice to the council after only 18 minutes. I don't know if he means that I gave you flippant advice. That was never my intention. I didn't need 18 minutes to look up the information that I gave to you because on Saturday, I will be practicing law for 23 years. I know the information that I gave you without looking it up. A moratorium for this project is not, is not something that is allowed. It is already approved. If you were to adopt a moratorium, it could apply to other parts of the city where you could do studies and you could evaluate all the things that Mr. Ryan enumerated about fire safety and water pressure and all of those things, but it would apply to other projects. It wouldn't apply to this project. And I think Mr. Ryan is right, that the city, if you were to adopt a moratorium, you would certainly be sued over that. And I cannot give you legal advice to actively do something that will get you sued, especially in a lawsuit that the city would lose. Even if it would bring track back to the table, as some of the neighbors have suggested, it doesn't change the fact that they have, they would have the upper hand in a lawsuit like that because they already have an approval. And changing the zoning or wanting to put their, you know, adopting a moratorium for the very purpose of stopping their development is a losing lawsuit for the city. And I cannot give you legal advice to take, to take action to do that because that's harmful to the city. So, you know, I mean, I don't know, just looking at my notes quick to make sure that I cover most of the hotspots. You know, I think that's pretty much everything that I needed to respond to. And Mr. Schotler suggested that the city hasn't even given, hasn't even made the effort to give a fake report to the residents to show that the city council has tried to do something to satisfy the requests of the neighbors. I don't know what good it does anybody for the city to do anything to generate a fake report, even if that's meant to be humorous. I'm not sure, obviously, the city would not do that. Any reports or information that the city would gather would be to provide factual information to the residents. And, you know, the fact that neighbors come and speak their piece doesn't change the fact that there is, there's nothing in front of the council right now that the council can take action on to change the approvals that have already been given for this project. And as we've talked about before, we're still waiting for the judge to issue a decision on the motions that have been pending since the end of July. Hopefully, by the end of next week, which is the deadline that the judge has, we'll hear something and we can talk about that next time. So if you'll, unless you all have questions, that's my report for tonight.
Thank you.
I apologize for interrupting. Can I just, please have-
After the meeting, after the meeting. After the meeting, we can.
She said it's proved, but primitive is what the statute says, primitive. They don't, Tract doesn't own the land. When do you give permits to non-managing?
After the meeting, we can have a discussion. Nick?
I think the one comment I did want to make tonight is sort of in line with your last point. There was a comment made that nothing was ever attempted, and I just wanted to call out kind of one inaccuracy, or as I would see it, is when there was action in front of me on the day of the vote, that morning, I did sit on Mr. Schotler's desk and talked to him about things he wanted, things he wanted to negotiate for. Three big ones on that list were the setbacks, the buffers, and the lighting. I called Tract that day, and if you looked at the revised copy of the changes that were there that night, you would see a doubling of the buffer from 40 to 80 feet and a added requirement of zero-foot candles at the property boundary. So while I know that to this crowd, we didn't do enough, or more could be done, the statement of "we did nothing" is not accurate.
Thank you. Jake?
Just a reminder, it's no secret, there's a levy election coming up in a few weeks. Just want to encourage residents to be an informed voter. There's plenty of information on the school district website regarding the referendum, on their social media channels, on their YouTube page. And it's important to note, regardless of the outcome, we're not, this is not being done to send a message to St. Paul or to DC. This is all about local control and us locally deciding what we want the future of our district to look like. If we want to go down the road of additional budget adjustments or increased investments, that's up to us to decide. So I just encourage everyone to educate yourself and get out there and vote on or before the fourth.
Thank you. Steve?
Thank you for saying that, Jake. I was, I've been debating about saying anything for a week or two, and I was kind of motivated by the courage of the two individuals who spoke earlier with their stories. With the nature of the work I do, it's kind of seasonal to a certain degree. It's extremely busy right now, and then other times of the year, not so busy. So last year, I decided, you know, I want to be a substitute teacher. And lo and behold, you know, I had to go get my license and all that kind of stuff, and I'm a college graduate, so I became a teacher. And quite honestly, it brought tears to my eyes because it was kind of one of those vocations I had always wanted, but, you know, just kind of the way things went during college and maybe having less than superior academics, I chose a different career, and it's worked out well. But the reason I bring that up is because I had an opportunity, or I've had and have had an opportunity multiple times, to be in our special ed classrooms at a number of our different elementary schools. And I'll just offer this as an opinion for anyone in particular who is adamantly a no voter on the referendum. The one thing I will say, and I concur with Jake, and again, this is not, this is not the school board meeting, but I will say that the health of a community is very much in line with the quality of our schools. It just is. It's been proven over and over and over and over and over. So we talk about the quality of our community. It's a direct reflection of the quality of our school district. They're hand in hand. And, but the comment I was gonna make, though, and I almost kind of lost my train of thought there, is, you know, I've went into these classrooms and I've seen these teachers, these educators, who are trying to work with, you know, students who are, have a lot of special needs, in a, as a, you know, a special ed parrot teacher. I'm often kind of sitting there, and I'll say to the lead teacher, you know, let me know what you want me to do, because it all seems completely overwhelming to a certain degree until you really get to know the students, you get to know the teachers. And that's what we're funding, you know, when we talk about a levy. We're funding our neighbors. We're funding our friends. We're funding other people that make our community stronger, make our community better. And I'll tell you, you know, at different times in my life, I've been a very, you know, do I vote yes in a referendum, do I vote no in a referendum, do I not say anything about it? But having been in the classroom, having seen the benefit that those students get from teachers, from educators that are right here in our community, and the benefit they would get from that referendum passing, I think it's a win-win for all of us.
Thank you.
I have nothing tonight.
Nothing. David?
This time of year is a busy time of year in HR. We've got open enrollment starting next week. We're finalizing personnel budgets for 2026, and we are eyes-deep in the BSNA software transition, which goes live in 42 days. So it's busy in HR right now.
Thank you. Deanna?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight at our EDA meeting, we continued this tradition that we're building, where we invite partners in to discuss how we can work together. And tonight's discussion was with the University of Minnesota Extensions to talk about how we can support and grow the entrepreneurial ecosystem that exists within this community. I thought it was a fantastic discussion, and I just wanted to thank the EDA for your active participation in that, and I'm excited to see where this will go. So, thank you.
Thank you. John?
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. You may have noticed, last week during MEA, there was some activity on Flagstaff Avenue. In addition to hydrant flushing, which we tend to do around the high school when classes are not in session, that was completed. But we also had some manholes protruding from the pavement significantly. We explored many options for adjusting those essentially mechanically, but the way they were constructed, they left no room for adjustment. We'd have to excavate around the manholes, take a section off, put a shorter section on, and reconstruct them. So we had Northwest Asphalt, and we worked with them to mill and overlay around about a dozen manholes on Flagstaff Avenue. Turned out really well. We smoothed out the bumps and provided a nice, clean, finished product there. It wasn't a complete mill and overlay, but we did quite a bit of work around the manholes to make it safer for plow drivers and a smoother drive for the users of the roadway.
Thank you. Kelly?
Halloween Walk is this Friday, 5:30 to 7:00 PM, behind Dodge Middle School outside. We have 26 businesses and organizations participating, so I want to take the opportunity to thank those that are participating. It doesn't happen without them. Halloween Havoc Tour is going on. We have 33 houses on the tour this year. The map is on the city's website and social media. And then tomorrow is open to our food pop-up pantry at the Rambling River Center from 3:00 to 4:30 PM.
Thank you. Kim?
I just want to notify everyone that Invoice Cloud, the city's online payment system used for utility billing, is currently down for maintenance. It has to do with certification of the delinquent accounts. We need to bring it down a little bit so that we can cut that off. So it was cut off last week on the deadline, October 16th, and it'll be up and running again 8:00 AM on Wednesday. But if anyone has questions, they can reach out to the utility billing team at the city.
Thank you. Chief?
November 8th is our 74th Annual Turkey Bingo. So I just want to put that on the calendar. I get one more opportunity on November 3rd at the council meeting to make this announcement. It's a great event for families, kids, everybody. Come down, win a turkey. We do have some cash prizes when we do some bingos. I highly suggest to come down a little bit early. Doors open at 4:30. It gets pretty crowded right away. If there are no seats available, come back down at 8 o'clock when some seats come available. It's a great fun, family adventure, and like I said, I get one more opportunity to pitch this, so November 8th, 4:30, Fire Station 1.
Thank you. Chief?
November 1st is the kickoff for Toys for Town 2025. So anyone that is interested in applying to be in the program, I ask you to look to our website for guidance on how to do that. And also, if you are a site to receive gifts for donations, expect those bags coming in the week before, likely Thursday, the 30th. We believe we'll be delivering those.
It's so crazy to think that Toys for Town is already around the corner, and Turkey Bingo. Where did the year go? I don't have anything else to add, so I'd like to seek a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn at 8:04.
Second.
Motion by Jake, second by Steve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned at 8:04.